Good afternoon, I'm Dennis Galucki and welcome to the 486 Imagine Greater Buffalo Program, including our 108th Virtual Imagine Program. And that's hosted by the Buffalo and Erie County Public Library. Thank you so much for joining us today. This program is created by the Center for the Study of Art, Architecture, History and Nature, or SEASON, and ImagineLifelongLearning.com. Now, before we get started, just a little housekeeping. Everyone watching will be muted and your video turned off. If you do have a question or comment, please type it into the chat box and we'll go through them at the end of the presentation. We are recording this program so you can watch it again later on the Downtown Central Libraries Facebook page and YouTube channels. And we hope you consider sharing the link with your friends and others. Now, on to our featured speaker, Dr. Gail Bernstein. Dr. Bernstein was appointed Erie County Commissioner of Health in January of 2012. Since that time, she has been multitasking. On one hand, managing the job of a public health spokesperson for Erie County. And on the other, she has continued teaching students and medical residents at UB's Jacob School of Medicine and biomedical sciences as a clinical professor of pediatrics. Dr. Bernstein has received numerous awards, including the Erie County Achievement Award. And she has been honored as a fellow from the Society for Adolescent Health and Medicine, as well as twice receiving the National Association of County and City Health Officials Promising Practice Award. Also, the American Academy of Pediatric Special Achievement Award. And numerous awards from the US Department of Health and Human Services, the Baltimore Mayor's Citation for Community Service, and more. In the last three years, health and wellness has played a major role in all our daily lives. I am pleased to welcome Dr. Gail Bernstein, who will speak about public health and health equity. So now, let's hear from Dr. Gail Bernstein. Doctor, take it away.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you so much for inviting me to speak with you all today. So what I'm going to be talking about is improving health disparities in Erie Counties. And so I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through. So can I have the next slide, please? So, in place just over one year, our Health Equity Office has epidemiologists, program managers, health educators, and a grant writer. And we are all focusing on advancing health through an equity lens for our department and the county. So as a department, their work will inform our overall work in how we prevent disease and promote better health outcomes. So CDC defines health equity as when everyone has the opportunities and resources they need to be as healthy as possible and that no one is disadvantaged. Next, please. So going back to the CDC definition of equity, the question is, how do we build those resources that we need for people to be as healthy as possible? So right now, the Office of Health Equity is working on those first two points. Data collection and analysis, and outreach and education. And then for our next steps, we'll become more involved with policy and program development and with other partners in our community. Next, please. So this graphic was developed by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation late last year. So if you've had an interest in health equity, this representation is of how an environment can be adapted, created, with an individual needs in mind. And this is replacing the old graphic of people who are standing on the fence that is on the bottom right-hand side of this slide. So the newer graphic, which is the large graphic in the middle of the slide, offers, so the older graphic, sorry, on the bottom, uses the same tool, a box, to address the problem, which is a fence. So the newer graphic offers solutions tailored to each person's abilities and needs, such as a ramp to assist the person in the wheelchair, and a loudspeaker for the older adult with hearing impairment. So the Office of Health Equities approach followed this model of first identifying and defining where the health inequities are and who they affect. Next, please. So a question is, what is health disparity? And so, public health focuses on interventions that we can put in place to prevent negative health outcomes and promote positive health, and to prevent negative health outcomes and to promote positive health outcomes. So we do this in a social, economic, political, and cultural environment where past and present resources are unequally distributed. But that does not have to be our future. Next, please. So thinking about health disparity examples, you can imagine the differences in the lives between someone who is affluent, who lives in a new home in the suburbs with a good job, educational background, and health insurance versus the life of a person who has few financial resources, no educational background, job, or no job, no insurance, who lives in an old home in a neighborhood with many other boarded up homes. So in these examples, you can imagine there will be differences, huge differences in these two individuals' lives. So in terms of their length of life, their quality of life, their rates of disease, disability, and death, their severity of any disease, and their access to treatment. Next, please. So what determines health outcomes? So it's partially from genetics. I think we all think it's all genetics, but it's really, it's just part genetics. And the risk based on your own and your family's genetic makeup that determines the risk for developing certain cancers, like chronic conditions, genetic disorders, like muscular dystrophy, cystic fibrosis, or sickle cell anemia. Also, health is also determined partially by our behaviors, such as smoking, alcohol consumption, job-related stress, nutrition diet, substance use, and exercise. But what about the rest? Next, please. So actually, our health outcomes are most highly influenced by the social determinants of health. So actually, over 50% of our health outcomes are derived from our economic stability, our education, access, and quality of education, healthcare access, and the quality of that healthcare in neighborhood and built environment, and the social and community context in which we live. Next, please. So this is a partial list of the social determinants of health. And you note that many can fit under multiple categories from the previous slide. So food and nutrition can be a function of your economic stability, but also, it's what's available in your neighborhood. So people can experience trauma from experiencing poverty, but it can also be found in interactions with the healthcare and educational systems. Next, please. So many people ask the question, well, why can't just people just change their behavior? Well, it's hard to follow doctors' instructions and public health messages to eat better if your housing situation lacks a refrigerator or a place to store or prepare food, or if you can't afford fresh produce or nonpackaged food, or if you can afford them, but there are no grocery stores that you are reliable or convenient to get to. And then go to a doctor? Well, you know, that's easier said than done. The best case, you have health insurance and some time to spare. You know, specialist appointments can take months to get. Many people have jobs where they don't get paid for their time off to see a doctor, so it's really difficult for them to go. Or if you don't have a job flexibility to get those appointments, or lack insurance, or a means to pay your co-pay for these doctors, you know, or a co-pay to pay those doctors, you know, these visits get more and more out of reach. And then, you know, exercise more. Well, for some people, working multiple unstable jobs, or a parent trying to care for kids, and elderly parents, or finding ways to make it through the day is hard enough, let alone 30 minutes for some meaningful exercise. And then take away safe and walkable streets, remove park-like areas for group recreation, and place gym facilities in areas where only reachable by car, and exercise options that are very limited. It's very hard for somebody to exercise to improve their health. And then for them, move to a different neighborhood. Well, moving is expensive. I mean, you know, moving disconnects people from their neighborhoods and from their social network, you know, from their neighbors, you know, people they can babysit, who can give them rides or advice, you know, and be part of the social activities and celebrations. So it's just, none of this is easy, like we might think. Next, please. So one important part of our Health Equity Office is that we have epidemiologists. So those are trained professionals who can collect, analyze, interpret, and communicate health data, and who we have them on our Health Equity team. Our epidemiologists analyze available data that consistently indicate that Erie Counties' black community experienced the most health disparities and inequities, such as homelessness, exposure to violence, children living in poverty, and the impact of systemic racism and intergenerational trauma. Next, please. So segregation has impacted the lives of many black, brown people in Erie County and the city of Buffalo. So maps clearly show rates of chronic health conditions and factors that correspond with race and place of residence. Why? Well, because of Buffalo's history of redlining, discriminatory lending, and zoning laws. And the disinvestment into communities of color creates environments that are not conducive to good health and well-being. Next, please. So, for example, let's consider diabetes. So this map is from places.cdc.gov. So it's a data visualization tool where you can see how health outcomes, risk behaviors, prevention factors like cancer screenings and health status align quite strongly with demographics and particularly race ethnicity. So this map presents diabetes prevalence in Erie County with the darker colors corresponding to the higher prevalences. So you can see that the highest rates are located in areas of poverty, you know, mostly in the cities of Buffalo, you know, mostly where people who are categorized as black or brown reside. And we know that diabetes is a risk factor for many serious illnesses that it can affect the quality and length of life, such as heart disease, kidney disease, vision loss, infections, amputations. They all reduce mobility and reduce the quality of life. Next, please. So another example, let's look at maternal mortality. For the most recent state data available, maternal mortality represents a clear health disparity. So in 2018, 51% of pregnant-associated deaths in New York State were none among non-Hispanic black women. And this group accounts for only 14% of the live births. The March of Dimes gives New York State a C for infant and maternal health. So we have to do better. Next, please. So this graph presents maternal mortality rates in three-year periods from 2020, it's from 2001 to 2018, by race, sorry, by race. So US rates among black women is in red, and US rates among white women is in blue. New York State rates among black women is in yellow, and New York State rates among white women is in purple. So you can see, over an 18-year period, rates of maternal deaths in New York State, that's pregnant women dying during or soon after their pregnancy, were highest for black women in New York State, even higher than the national average, and lowest for white women in New York State, 45 times lower, and lower than the national average. Next, please. So this chart represents New York State maternal mortality rates by various demographic characteristics during 2001 to 2018. So looking at these data, you can see how there are correlations between the social determinants of health and maternal mortality outcomes. Again, over a long period, private pay insurance patients have a lower rate of mortality. And having earned advanced degrees puts women at lower risk of mortality. And black, non-Hispanic women have an astonishing high rate of mortality compared to white and Hispanic populations. Next, please. So if we had more time, I could discuss these other topics that our department and our Office of Health Equity are actively working on, like climate change, generational impacts of poverty, law enforcement, the justice system, LGBTQ plus health, mental health, people living with disabilities, refugee, immigrant, and limited English proficiency populations in rural communities. However, we, you know, I only had about, you know, 20 minutes, so I had to be prudent with my time. So, but these are all issues that the Office of Health Equity and the Health Department is working on. So I hope you can consider them for potential ideas for future Imagine presentations with our department. Next, please. So just want to thank Dennis and the library for coordinating these events. And I want to bring your attention to information and other resources that we offer at the Erie County Health Department with our website, our Office of Health Equities website, and then our social media with Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. So thank you, and I am available to answer some questions, if you have any.
Doctor Bernstein, excellent summary. Covered a lot of ground in a short period of time. We'll invite people to submit any questions. Again, put them in the chat box and we'll get to those. But let me start, the whole idea of the Office of Health Equity, is that current to your present administration? Have we always had an Office of Health Equity in Erie County? Or how?
No, this is actually an initiative from the County Executive's Office. And the Office of Health Equity was actually signed into law in July of 2021. And after that, we started working on building the office. We hired a great director and leader, Kelly Woferd. And she's been hiring staff and building up the office. And she's started programs, and they've applied for funding. And they've actually already have one large grant from New York State. And they're being very productive.
There's so many not-for-profits, foundations, working in so many of the same areas. Does their, is their coordination with the Office of Health Equity with all these disparate groups? We had MNT last week, the woman in charge of DEI. And you say, wow, that, how does all this get connected from a county standpoint?
Well, we have, well, first of all, the Office of Health Equity has just finished undertaking a massive survey of diverse group of people throughout the county and looking at their health concerns and their desires. And so we have those data that we're going to start to, you know, develop some programs. And then we also already have a community through the state, a community health assessment and a community health improvement plan. And we work with many partners to develop and implement this plan. And so that's also another way that we all work together. However, you know, the problems of health disparities and health inequities is huge. And we really need to rely on our community partners to help get the job done. It's just really more, you know, too huge a task than, say, you know, county government. So we, you know, somehow, we're able to divide and conquer. And there seems to be many opportunities for us to collaborate and connect. And, you know, that's, you know, that's our Erie County, right? We're in Buffalo, we're the city of good neighbors. And I think that many of our community partners have a great history of collaborating and working together.
Great, and I'm sure you're in the mix then. Caitlin, do we have some questions?
Yeah, we have a few questions. The first one for Dr. Bernstein is, what can the community do if we see an inequitable situation, such as street curbs that are not ADA compliant?
Well, that's, you know, a complicated question. I mean, I guess the first would be to, if you, you know, you see a, you know, a problem, it would be important to know, like, you know, who owns that problem? So say if you're in the city of Buffalo, for example, and you see one of those streets that are not ADA compliant, that would be a complaint to the city of Buffalo. So I think that, you know, that there, so there are, you know, so many challenges that we have in our community with equity. And I, and they're, and I think that, you know, in order to get the job done, you have to, you know, go to the source that, you know, runs that operation or who, like, manages that road to, you know, to let them know, to point out the problem. And, you know, and start there and ask questions. And, you know, be a good community advocate.
Yeah. The second question is, is COVID a factor in health disparity within the county? If so, please briefly discuss.
Yeah, well, COVID has been a challenge as, you know, looking at health disparities in the county. However, you know, we've worked hard with our partners in the African-American Health Equity Task Force, you know, to ensure that people in, you know, on the east side and the west side of Buffalo have access to vaccines, you know, have access to treatment, you know, have access to testing. And so we've worked really hard to ensure that, you know, all our community has access to the resources that can keep people well during COVID. You know, however, you know, what we, you know, couldn't change is, you know, who are the front-facing workers who are most likely to get exposed to COVID? So remember when initially were those lockdowns? There were some essential businesses that were, that had to stay open because they were essential. So those were like, you know, supermarkets and drugstores and the Health Department and hardware stores. And, you know, many times, you know, people who are, have like low education, and those are, you know, low-paying jobs. And, you know, so those individuals who are, have, you know, suffer from, you know, more health disparities are forced to work in those, you know, low-paying jobs. And, you know, and so those were, put them at risk since they were, you know, front-facing to the public, you know, during COVID, before we had vaccines. And before we were confident that masks were really working. I mean, they were putting themselves out there and getting exposed so that, you know, to the benefit of the rest of the community. So, you know, those were some disparities that, you know, that we saw during COVID.
Yeah. Um, another question, given our above-average per-person income, why are the rates of black pregnancy mortality so high in New York?
That is a very complicated question. And again, you know, not everybody has, and, you know, income below the average. I mean, in the city of Buffalo, we have many people that are struggling with poverty, you know, especially single moms, children. So that's a problem. And then the question of, you know, why the inequities in maternal mortality is very complicated. Actually, New York State put together a maternal mortality review board. Just, it just started right before the pandemic, and it continued during the pandemic to review cases of maternal child deaths, you know, around pregnancy, and to try to figure out like what happened in the system and what they can do to fix it. And so I believe that New York State has that report available on their website. And, you know, again, it's very complicated. It's, you know, how, you know, it partially has to do with, you know, access to healthcare, or, you know, people being afraid to access prenatal care because of, you know, other health conditions they may have. That they were worried that, you know, eventually their children would be removed from their home. Like, say, for example, women with substance use disorder. I mean, they would be worried that if their toxicology screens were positive at labor and delivery, you know, even though they may be in treatment or they may be eager to get into treatment, you know, the child would be removed from their custody because of their positive tox screen. So there are also, you know, women are, can suffer from intimate partner violence. And it might be risky for them to go and seek healthcare during a pregnancy. And then also, there's, you know, once women do access the healthcare system, you know, there's, in everywhere, there is implicit bias, including in healthcare. And, you know, people who, you know, from those more impoverished, black, brown communities may, you know, it's just because of their appearance may elicit beliefs of, and, you know, attitude and bias among healthcare providers that really could be unfounded. So, you know, again, there are multiple reasons. It's very, very complicated. And it took New York State several years to come together with a group of hypotheses and recommendations. And Kara just put that New York State maternal mortality report in the chat. So if you want further detail, which, you know, again, with a lot of smart people working very, very hard on this question, you know, please read that report. Also, just, you know, a plug, we're, you know, working with UB and University of Buffalo, both the medical school and the law school. And we're hoping that this fall, we'll be able to And we're hoping that this fall, we'll be able to, to have a host our first reproductive justice conference. So stay tuned for more information about that.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple more questions. Someone asked, I'm having minor surgery in a couple of weeks and the doctor's office said I have to have a COVID test a few days before. Is the county still offering onsite COVID testing? And if so, where can one go to get tested?
Well, the county is no longer offering onsite COVID testing. We've, are, are really trying to, you know, prioritize the public health problems that we've, we've always had and new problems that have emerged since the pandemic. So we're no longer in the business of COVID testing and/or vaccination, except for younger children who are not able to get access to a COVID vaccine from their pediatrician's office. The county can vaccinate those children. However, for testing, there is, there is a lot of, you know, testing out there. Many times the healthcare office, the, the physician's offices that are scheduling the procedures will, you know, recommend where you can go. But you can, you know, do a Google search for COVID testing near you. You know, pharmacies are still offering them and there are still many in, like, independent, like, you know, pop-ups that, that are offering them. There are your old, like, laboratories that you use for your regular healthcare, like Questive Lab Core, they're still offering them. So there, there's, there is a lot of testing available in the community for, for diagnostic testing of COVID nineteen. So, you know, again, if you're, you can, you can Google it, you know, COVID test near me. And if, you know, that's a concern, you can call up your healthcare provider that is recommending that you get the test and ask them where, where you can get tested.
Thank you, Dr. Burstein. I have another question here. Someone asked, which NYS areas had the highest rate of black infant morbidity for black women? Would that be in the maternal mortality report?
It may be in the report. Also, you know, New York State does have, carry maternal morbidity mortality data on their website. So, so you can check there. You know, one, one reason why we also see a lot of, you know, higher rates of, you know, maternal morbidity mortality among black, brown women is just because of the, you know, stress that they have to bear from, you know, systemic racism and also, you know, just, and, you know, and generations of that. And also, you know, generations of, of being treated poorly by the healthcare community and, you know, rightly have developed mistrust of the healthcare community. And, you know, you remember, it was CDC that, that initiated the Testegi trial in the nineteen forties where they, you know, intentionally didn't, didn't, you know, did not observe and did not treat a group of black, brown people who were infected with syphilis just to find out, you know, what the outcomes of syphilis could be if people were untreated. So, you know, we, so I think it's, you know, generations of, in current systemic racism also causes stress on the women who is pregnant and that can affect adversely affect the, the outcomes of the pregnancy too.
Thank you. And then the last question is, does your department have any influence on the nutritional worth of Buffalo school luncheons and other school districts?
The, the, the school districts in Buffalo and Erie County are, act independently. We are always happy to, to provide them with, with advice and guidance if we're asked. However, we do not have any authority over those school districts. I believe they all have nutritionists on staff and they're also all challenged with, you know, a budget to, to, you know, to be able to ensure they're as nutritional food for their students. So if, you know, if anybody has concerns, they should contact their school district for, you know, for concerns about the, the diet, the meals served at the schools.
Is that it, Caitlin?
Yep, that was the last question.
Very good. You know, I'll, I'll just finish up, Dr. Burstein. I, I always notice in those Robert Wood Johnson county reports across the nation that here in New York State, it isn't just Erie County. It's, it's all of Western New York counties seem to rank near the bottom. I, I'm pleased to note that Erie County has, has moved ups a few notches. I think you were forty-sixth out of sixty-two counties. We are here, so let's, let's, yeah, give ourselves a minor applause. But my question really is, is there a, a person like you in all the counties in Western New York? And if so, is there a collaboration between all of you to say, what, what's going on here in the bigger picture? We've got a university, we've got a medical campus, we've got, you know, a pretty interesting, as you pointed out, city of good neighbors at the core of this area. And, and they want to do the right thing to, to improve all of our wellness, I would think. And, and so yours is more this leadership role. Don't have answers for that, but what, what, how, how can you respond to that from a county collaboration of, of Western New York?
Sure. Well, I mean, you know, in general, you know, Western New York has, has higher poverty rates or, you know, high poverty rates compared to other parts of the state. So again, looking at the social determinants of health is a large predictor of health outcomes. So that, that is probably, you know, we surmise that that is probably one of the large drivers of why Western New York ranks lower in the RWJ rankings. However, we, as you said, we do collaborate with our Western New York partners. Each local health department is directed either by a health commissioner who's a physician or a, a public health director who is, has some expertise in public health. If they have an MPH or with or without some other degree like, you know, an RN or a nurse practitioner. So, so we have a Western New York Public Health Alliance where we meet regularly to discuss public health challenges in all of our counties and our Western New York community. So we, we are working hard to improve the, you know, the health of, of our community. But again, again, it, you know, it takes a village and that's why it's, it's really a partnership. It's, it's, it's all the, you know, other organizations that are working in, you know, in their lanes on their specific issues that can affect social determinants of health and like, you know, housing and access to food and nutrition. And there, you know, there's a huge, you know, the subculture that is, is working on, you know, getting good, you know, fresh nutritious foods into the mouth of residents in the city of Buffalo. And we're, I mean, and then looking at, at the healthcare systems. And we, you know, really, it, it really does take a village and, you know, working together. I, I think that we are able to move the dial and we will move the dial.
Good. And that's the way to, to finish this wonderful presentation, Dr. Burstein. Thank you for your good work and we will have you back down the road to cover all, some of those other areas of interest that your department gets into. And as you pointed out, certainly don't have time in today's program to, to get into. But it's, it's, it's a broad range of, of issues. So from justice to many others. So we'll see you again and thank you for joining us again today.
Thanks for inviting me.
You're quite welcome. And folks, thank you for joining us today. We'll see you back here on Zoom next Tuesday as we hear from Black Rock historian Ellen Obers. I met Ellen when he gave a presentation to the Black Rock Historical Society on Hammer Street. And it was a packed house. And, and I said, we've got to get you here on the Imagine Program. And next Tuesday is the day he'll be giving us, telling us about the Black Rock area and especially as it's being impacted by thoughts and changes with the Skajowice Expressway or soon-to-be Skajowice Parkway, the one ninety-eight. So join us for that. I'm Dennis Kalucki. Be well and good day.